Like to tell the order, city council workshop for June nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton. White.
Here.
Do you have a form?
Uh, Mayor Stanton unfortunately had a funeral to attend tonight, so you guys are stuck with me. I'll do my very best. Um, do we have any agenda changes, any additions or deletions today? Hearing none. Move on, guest speaker. I don't believe we have a guest speaker this afternoon either. Okay. Uh, public comment on agenda items only. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes on agenda items only. Anyone in the room? Anyone online? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the first public comment session. Move on to discussion items, uh, six A budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, if the city manager would like to take that away.
Sure, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Uh, we have, uh, fresh, uh, hot off the press, uh, budget amendments, uh, for you this afternoon. You know, we're approaching the end of our, uh, fiscal year and, and our, uh, our city treasurer, uh, will be leaving us at the end of this week. Uh, so we wanted to make sure everything was as up to date as possible, even with, you know, fresh payroll numbers for today. So he was working on it even this afternoon. So, uh, he has some fresh numbers to go, uh, uh, over with you. I think, you know, the overall message is that, uh, you know, you had budgeted, you know, uh, you know, for this current fiscal year to essentially use some fund balance. Uh, doesn't look like we're going to need to do that. In fact, it looks like we'll have, uh, actually a surplus of revenue and so we'll have additional, uh, build up our fund balance even more after the end of this fiscal year. But I'll turn it over to our treasurer to kind of go through the highlights with you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm on the resolution, page one, two thirds down, we had the box checked there. So we're just gonna start with the general fund. So the right-hand column will tell you basically these are all revenues, the first, you know, from the fourteen thousand down to the five hundred and fifty-three dollars. So it's increased revenue. The first four items are all related to property taxes. The next is the permit fees were increased and then revenue sharing was up. The liquor license, I have no idea why the state of Michigan paid us twice this year, but they did and they did it to everybody. So that's up. Oval Beach fees with the increase in fees, that's up. And then gazebo fees is up a little bit. The interest earned is way up, you know, we, we had some good investments and some high, most of the rates were all over five percent. The miscellaneous donations, that's the large donation given by a family here in the last thirty days. So those are all the fees that are increased, or revenues, excuse me. Then we get into the excess expenses that were based on a year ago's budget that was presented. So contractual services, that is, um, in the city council's cost center, basically that's for, um, Mr. Walsh's services that was not anticipated in the beginning a year ago. And then the back page is the city managers department, the eighty-six thousand dollars in increased wages, some office expense, telephone, printing, and a little bit excess wages and benefits in the, um, clerk's budget and some legal fees. The financing increase in wages and benefits and then a little bit in the, uh, the, uh, city hall is basically increased. We still haven't been, we haven't paid, but all the cement work and gutter work that was done here. And then the public works is basically, that's the catch-all for the Department of Public Works. That's anywhere from brush and leaf pickup to the trash pickup every day, um, to everything else that goes on that, you know, doesn't have a home. It's increased wages and some increased, uh, fringe benefits. The contractual services, seventy-five thousand dollars, a lot of that has that to do with the two milfoil treatments that the city were paying in full now and a few other small items, some increase in holiday lightings, increasing utilities. Everybody knows the water bills are up, the electrical bills are up over a year ago. And then it's increased costs in the planning department, then HTC, then there's more increased parks in weight salary and, and fringe benefits this year and an increase in the equipment rental. Most of that's driven to all the work that our Department of Public Works did with the village square undertaking that wasn't originally in the budget. And then we get down to the oval beach, there's an increase in wages basically out there in both the beach and in the concession. Then we flip over and basically that's the, um, that's all the general fund we just discussed. The next page, we get into the, it has basically the major streets, the local streets, the debt fund, the water and sewer fund, and it just increased some county road millage, um, increased interest, some increase in some supplies and contractual services. We did, did the street work up on the hill, taking Taylor West and East and then get to the local streets. There's some increased interest. The one that says special assessment of twenty-five thousand dollars, that was the bridge street that was done and the township has been invoiced to pay that bill that they owe us. They, it was a cost share program and the contractual services, you know, that wasn't originally in the budget a year ago and, and we've increased those expenses there for, to pay the main contractor. Um, the debt service fund will be paid off in twenty-eight. We had some increased, uh, millage collection and some increased interest and we decreased a couple of the expenses. And we're down to the water tap fees, sewer tap fees, that's increased revenues, uh, basically new construction on new taps and new sewers and increased interest. And then the motor pool on the back page, it just some increased interest, sales of some old squad cars and a few other miscellaneous small items. And then there's just some increased, um, operating expenses out there for the equipment. That's basically an internal service fund there. So that's the budget adjustment that will hopefully get us through the end of the year. There's only ten more days left in the year, so we'll be pretty close. So that's the, that needs to be approved. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, otherwise I could then go into the stapled sheet that has kind of what the revenue expenses where we're at, after we've made this budget adjustment. It's included in this report here.
Anyone have questions for Peter? Please, Russ.
Yeah, this may be more when we get into the detail, Peter. Um, but just want to make sure you understand, so the, um, see here, so the amounts that are on page, the second page under parks, is all of that associated with the playground? Is that, is that, or just a portion of it?
Well, I would say some of the, the wages probably could be. The fringes is, you know, that's kind of up and down because, you know, with health insurance, we'll hire new employees. We don't know for hiring somebody that's single or married or with small children or adult children today. But I would say definitely probably the five thousand dollars of wages is, is over. The equipment rental is the big one because, you know, we had a lot of our trucks, our backhoes, our front-end loaders down there. So that's probably, that's way up. Uh, we had a, well, I don't have them calculated, but we had a lot of hours, you know, our DPW crew did a lot of work down there for an ongoing project. And basically in that money, then that equipment line gets rolled into that last, to the motor service pool. So it's kind of like you take this pot of money and we're putting it over in this pot of money to buy new equipment. So it's not like that wasn't sent out to, it's not like we rented bulldozers or dump trucks from somebody else. It's kind of like you rent your own stuff and you're taken. So you have funds at some point in the future to buy a new loader that's in the current budget for the new fiscal year.
Okay, um, on the next page in the debt fund, so that's paid off in twenty twenty-eight.
The last principal payment, I believe, is in November of twenty-eight.
What was the original amount of that? Do you remember?
The, the what's still left to pay?
No, what the, what the total debt was when we started, you remember?
I want to see was, was it three million? Cause we refinanced it, so.
Yeah, that.
Honestly, it was a two, it was close to three million dollars, whatever the original bond was back like.
And that was all dedicated to street, all, all streets, yeah.
Yeah, they did. All, Alvin's all new, Holland's all new, Lucy Street. Vine Street was all new because that used to be dirt.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of, and a lot of the costs was water and sewer lines that were the major cost. Algen, there might have been some other ones, but a while ago.
Um, and then back to, you said on our contractual services, under, uh, major streets fund, uh, the thirty-nine thousand, that was Taylor Tech and.
Well, yeah, that was, cause that was over two fiscal years. And so I was just trying to get everything back to, you know, zero, because I think we have all the bills from the contractors. I mean, we, we have some kind of residual couple thousand dollars that we owe them. That's kind of like a retainer.
So I guess the, the key takeaway from this, I think, for just general knowledge and make sure I've got this right, is that you mentioned that we don't have to pull anything from the general fund to make any, and we're not under.
Well, no.
Our revenues, our revenues, the increased revenues that you explained.
Just for the general fund, the street funds are another story. So, but the, the general fund's in great shape, so.
Yeah, but with some of the increases you mentioned, those have offset some of these other increased costs that we had to incur this year.
Yeah, so I think the big things that made, made us grow is the interest we collected, the oval beach increased fees, the legal fees are down over last year. There was a fourth one we talked about, the legal fees.
And, uh, permit fees are up.
These are up and the interest, those three things and, and the attorney fees are, are down considerably over a year ago's fiscal year. We haven't seen the June bills yet, so.
Yeah, right. So, and then the, the permit fees themselves will actually be geared or move towards support of Granicus, right? I mean, that's essentially its earmark for that.
Well, permit fees is a large.
Well, right, it's a larger budget, a portion that's going to be the short-term rental permit.
Portion of those fees, yes, will support paying for the Granus contractual services or, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just on the, the legal fees, the insurance, I know obviously it's a certainly a topic that folks are, you know, focused on and understandably so. So, um, I had a meeting this afternoon with, um, uh, the insurance carrier, our legal counsel here and, uh, and legal counsel that are in current assigned related to, you may, what will tell claim of appeal. At this point, insurance is indicating that they will, um, you know, provide legal defense and, and pay for that, uh, cost. Um, still want to see the ultimate determination letter. I have a conversation tomorrow that, uh, that the insurance agent's gonna call me and, and uh, largely probably discuss some of our prior legal fees that we had as it related to the initial lawsuit. Um, because we, you know, had a, a number of dollars that we expensed in trying to deal with that, you know, quickly, given the, the nature of, uh, the concerns that were going on and ultimately settled. So, I, you know, I've asked them to reimburse us for those costs. I don't know if they will or not. Um, so that's a conversation that's ongoing, that, that's a large chunk of our legal fee or a large chunk of legal fees. Um, but then going forward, uh, for next fiscal year, just for your knowledge, at this point so far, insurance is going to provide legal defense related to that claim of appeal, which will save us some dollars.
Be great. Peter, do you want to follow up with the, I'm sorry, are there any further questions for Peter on the first, uh, items on the budget amendments? Okay.
Okay, so now this is the revenue expenses and this has got the payroll and all the, the, most majority of the bills that'll be approved Monday night. So we're on page one and you can see the amended budget, which includes this budget adjustment you'll approve Monday night. So in the next column over the year-to-date balance, I'm working from the left to the right. So that's year-to-date, we collected three point eight million dollars in revenues and these are numbers as of yesterday of the revenue side. And that bottom line, right there, the revenues of, that three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, that was the original budget a year ago that was approved that we were, that budget was based on getting into our reserves of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then you could just see all the expenses, you know, by, by cost center of the council, city managers. So I guess the bottom line is, if you go to page five of ten, this is still the general fund, the year-to-date balances. If you go all, almost all the way to the bottom, you got total revenues of three eight, expenses of three four, that four hundred and two thousand dollars. That's where we are currently. You know, there's four hundred thousand dollars excess, but we still have a full payroll and probably some more utilities and a few other bills. I know we haven't paid for the sidewalk work out here, but, you know, and we still have the only revenue we have coming is Oval Beach is still coming in and I got, um, a couple revenue sharing checks that will be in there, but I mean, I don't know, I don't have crystal ball, but I see you're still well north of, close to three hundred grand. I mean, I can't, I know the payroll is going to be about fifty grand and, and, but we got revenue coming in from the beach, but I still think you're going to be somewhere, time the auditors get done, I'm north of three hundred grand of excess revenues going to the fund balance.
Great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of surprised to see that appears that the Oval Beach fees that we acted on in May is already seems to be showing up.
Yeah.
In a, in a big way.
So that's come in. So then the, the street funds, so if you go over, we're on page six of ten. You know, I guess you, you just see where our revenues are two thirty-six are expensive between the routine maintenance and a wear maintenance. And you go down, keep on the year-to-date, all the way to the bottom and you see the parentheses around the eighty-seven hundred dollars. So basically the major street fund, you know, basically right now, the bills we have, we're into the fund balance in major streets by, you know, eighty-eight hundred dollars, but we still have full payroll and a few bills. There's, and there's a little bit of gas tax money that will still be coming in, but we're still, we're still going to probably be about ten grand into the major street fund. And then basically we flipped to page seven of ten is the local street funds. And we're in the year-to-date column balance, all the way to the bottom, you go up to the third row where you can see the parentheses around the one sixty-six. So we're a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars into the ma, local street funds fund balance. And originally, if you go up, way up to the top, column to the left, we budgeted to get into it by a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, but we still, like I said, we still have payroll, uh, full payroll that goes into sharing. I think we owe the contractor a few more thousand dollars. So we're still going to be into that by at least a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, and just, just maybe just, uh, it's, you know, fresh memories like, yeah, we may be using some fun balance here that relates to local streets, but, you know, think about over the last year, how much roadwork has been done with East West, Tech and Taylor, uh, Bridge Streets, um, some building footfill work around town. So, I mean, there was a more aggressive approach this past fiscal year and, and addressing some, some, you know, much needed, uh, road projects. So, and, and certainly we still have fund balance left, so.
And so the next one is on page eight and it's basically our road debt bond. You know, that's just, we basically were collecting the tax and we're sending it back out and we got into our fund balance there of thirty-eight hundred dollars. If you go down that, you know, year-to-date balance, the third one from the bottom, but there's still like fifty-three thousand dollars in that account that we've been whittling it down over years. And then number nine, for page nine of ten is the water and street fund. We haven't really had any expenses that we booked to that fund that we've collected. Between interest, water and sewer tap fees, fifty-seven, just shy of fifty-seven thousand dollars this current fiscal year. And I told Ryan, I said, we know we could have booked some of the legal fees, you know, that we had with the Cal Lake thing. Instead, we didn't. We just had the general fund pay for it. And then the last one is basically the motor pool fund is where we, you know, maintain all of our, you know, pickup truck, dump trucks, tractor, the beach cleaner. And you basically, we've collected thirty-two thousand dollars in interest, sold a few pieces of equipment and the motor pool at two hundred and thirty-one thousand is basically money that was subsidized from the general fund and the two street funds through a transfer. Then you can just see the salary wages, the fuel and oil is the big thing. And this is kind of like a modified accounting. It's the kind of real world accounting, because there's depreciation in there that the auditors will, will go ahead and put everywhere the depreciation is there. So, um, I think there's like seven hundred thousand dollars in cash here, but I know in the budget currently for twenty-five, you know, Scott wants to get a new loader, that loader that we have, I think, close to twenty-five years old. Mother nature and salt starting to take a, where, where it tear off. So, these are numbers about as close as we can get. And only revenue, like I said, basically is left is the beach and some sales tax collection, but then you've got a whole payroll to do and then a couple other incidental expenses and just routine monthly bills. Don't know if anybody had any questions there, any line items that stick out, but.
Anyone with questions for Peter?
Uh, not a question, just more of a comment. Um, Peter, um, thank you for your service to the city. This is second nature for you because of your experience here. This institutional knowledge is going to be a great loss for our town to be able to ask questions about the bond. For instance, you can answer that immediately and we'll, we'll have experts here that'll be able to answer those questions, but not as promptly and with knowledge and kind of your forbearance on a lot of this. And so I want to give you a lot of credit for where the city is financially, even though council ultimately makes the decisions about appropriations. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to our, I have never heard anything but good things from people who've come to see you. The treasurer's not always the best person to come see, right? Usually paying a bill or something, but you've always treated people with grace and a smile on your face and a laugh. Uh, just, you're going to be missed and I'm sorry that you're leaving. Thank you.
Yep. Just, oh, one quick question.
Please.
So, so net, net, uh, end of the fund balance, we thought we would end at ten seven and we're ending at eleven one. So we're, we're four thirty-two. Higher than, than we had thought. I just want to be sure I have, I'm pulling that correctly.
So you're on page ten of ten that you're, so overall the funds, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's really that two seventy-nine, that two eighty number. See that hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, that's an adjustment.
Wait, it's, it's fine, but let me find, where's the two seventy?
Second column.
Second column.
Yeah.
Fourth row up. It really, between the mo, you take the motor, the general fund, the two street funds, the debt fund and the motor pool, were only about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars the positive. Cause see that hundred and thirteen thousand, the right underneath it?
Yeah.
There was another fund, the Mize Rose Garden Fund, that had its own fund, but the auditors didn't like it because really it was a general fund. So we rolled that into the general fund. So on the balance, or on the balance sheet, when you see the restricted funds later, there's going to be one that says Rose Garden. If you're looking at your audit, it's always been there. So there's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is like a fund balance from another fund that we folded into the general fund here in this current year. So really it, it went from one pot into the general fund. So it's not new much.
Okay. So if somebody asks the question, how much better off overall are you than you thought you would be? What's the answer to that?
I would say compared to what was, you know, originally, you're two hundred, you got two hundred and eight thousand dollars more in cash than you did a year ago with all your funds.
Excellent. Thank you.
And, and to be clear, that's what we kind of got back to about it being increases at Oval Beach, decreases in legal fees, increases in permits. Those would be the three primary things.
Right.
And interest, three hundred thousand dollars, offset by some of the things that they'd expect. Okay, that makes sense to me. All right. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
All right, we will move on to, uh, discussion item B, engagement of Plant Moran for financial consulting services.
Yeah, so kind of a, along the lines of, uh, treasurer duties and finance, as, as you know, uh, yeah, Peter's leaving, uh, uh, for another nearby community. And so he'll still be close and, and both he and, and the township have, uh, uh, assured, uh, us, all of us at the city, that they'll be available to help in any way that, that we need. And Peter's like, you have my number and, um, he'll be kind of returning actually on kind of some payroll days, just kind of double check and, and help with some things. And, um, so over the last, uh, couple of weeks, uh, Peter's been, uh, training both, uh, Jamie and Sarah on, on the more traditional, uh, treasurer-related, uh, duties. And they've been doing a fantastic job and taking, you know, training videos to remember things and walk through processes and, um, and I'm, I'm told that it's going very well, which I really appreciate all their, their teamwork on that and them stepping up to take on extra job duties during this, this transitional period as well. So, so Jamie and Sarah, you know, are handling the cash receipting and will be handling the cash receipting and deposits. Uh, you know, payroll accounts payable, tax administration is, is kind of pending, waiting on some additional, uh, millage rates from other tax and jurisdictions, uh, back bank reconciliations. And then, um, uh, Peter's giving me your kind of current investment status and where everything's at, um, and what banks. And so the clerk and I will be, you know, monitoring that. Um, we do have some CDs at the end of, uh, that are coming up, uh, that, that need to be taken care of and, and figuring out what to do next. Good thing is there's a very robust, uh, city policy on how to handle, uh, investments. Um, so, so we'll be working through, uh, those items, but you know, it's very important that we maintain the books properly, um, uh, and that, uh, we stay on top of our, our, our budget and that I have assistance with, with making sure that, that we're staying on target and, and moving through those processes. And then ultimately we'll have an audit, uh, you know, in the next, uh, crap that'll be starting here in the next few months and, and, and audit on, on this fiscal year's books. And so, um, and look at, look at, looked at some different options, uh, and how to best maybe handle the, the accounting related duties, um, uh, while we are in this period of transition and, and we do have the position of treasurer and finance officer posted. We've had a few applicants so far, uh, which is good. Um, and so as I kind of evaluated options, um, I, I took a look at what our, our neighbors actually had recently done. Uh, Douglas is, was, until recently was without a treasurer, uh, and, uh, and, and Tenville was for a period of time as well. Uh, and both of them engaged with, uh, the firm Plant Moran, uh, to help with their accounting duties. Uh, and both of them had very, very high, you know, recommendations to make as far as, uh, Plant Moran's, uh, work. So, I had a meeting with, with Plant Moran and, and they put together this, uh, uh, letter of engagement and proposed, uh, professional service agreement where, uh, they would, you know, maintain the general ledger accounting and, and, and really kind of provide as much or a little service as we would like. Uh, they can't touch any, uh, money. Uh, and they won't be involved in touching any of the actual money. Um, you know, they have read-only access and, and they'll need, you know, uh, access to certain systems to, to, to journalize things and keep that accounting going. But, so they've, they've provided, uh, the attached proposal in your packet. Um, certainly there's, um, some costs to this. Um, um, but I think it's also important to have peace of mind and know that our, our accounting is being taken care of properly. Plant Moran does this type of work for government, uh, governments across the, the nation. Um, I understand is they're, they're very well-recognized and very well-known for this, this type of work. Couple of different, uh, fee options here. We can either, you know, pay per hour for the particular staff member that would be working with us. Uh, in this case, they've indicated that, you know, the accounting consultant would be handling eighty-five percent or so of, of the actual work and that would either be onsite or remote, kind of a combination thereof. Um, and then to the extent that, you know, a manager, a partner, a senior accountant is needed, you know, they have a billable rate, but, um, they, they wouldn't be nee, needed that often is what I've been told. And so Plant Moran actually kind of provided a, an attached sheet showing comparable communities and how much they're spending and which duties, you know, and functions they're providing for those particular communities. If, uh, the council, you know, really wants to just know what the rate is ultimately and, and kind of protect against any, you know, larger costs that we might have if we have to have a more senior member involved. And they, they have offered kind of a, a blended rate, uh, that would be at a hundred and ninety-five dollars, um, per hour. So, um, wanted to bring this to you in a workshop format to get any, um, thoughts, questions, concerns. We have, uh, Brian here from Plant Moran. I think some others from his team as well that are more than willing to answer any and all questions that you have. We want myself, you as a council and our community to feel comfortable with, with, uh, uh, you know, this path forward, uh, at least until we get somebody else on board. Uh, and one last piece of, so Plant Moran is that, um, they're also available to kind of assist whatever that next person is as well. Kind of, I'll guide them for a little while. They have a training program if, if there's a need for that as well. Um, so it's an additional service that we have. It's kind of up to us and how much we, we need or don't, don't need them. So, sorry, Madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, if I just see if Brian has anything to add?
Yes.
Brian, anything that you want to add on?
I, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, I do certainly appreciate you considering us, uh, for this role, uh, for the time period until you find your next Peter, although it sounds like, uh, he, that person will have some pretty big shoes to fill. Uh, but as Ryan mentioned, we do this all across the country. Uh, we've been doing it for years and for my team, this is all that we do. We're not auditors, moonlighting as accountants. We are government accountants that serve government and do it every day of the year. Uh, Kelly Howie is one of the senior consultants on my team. She's on the call today. She would be part of the team servicing you. Uh, the rest of the team had other, uh, engagements today that they had to, to attend. But that is, the strength in numbers is one of the, the biggest advantages that we have. Uh, but I am happy to answer any and all questions that you might have.
Thank you. Um, I can start. I've, I've got, uh, experience in this area. I'm also CPA, former auditor from Metro Detroit and Plant Moran is widely known as being the place to go for municipal, um, work. Uh, this is not unusual for them. This is something that they do all the time. They loan out controllers, accountants and that. So, I have absolutely zero reservations about contracting with this firm and I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be great also to have fresh eyes on our accounting processes and things. It can't hurt. Um, and, um, I think that, uh, it's, it's important. It's money well spent. Um, I lean toward personally the, the, the billable hours part as opposed to the blended rate. I've seen our books. There's nothing in there that really gives, we don't have any really complicated things. Um, I like the idea, I understand of, you know, protecting ourselves and, you know, maybe going with the blended rate to cover us. But that, that's what I see the question of. Do you want to go with the blended rate to kind of cover anything that we might run into? And that certainly makes sense. It's a conservative approach, but also just knowing what our books look like. Um, I'd be very surprised if we wound up at that high of a rate by the time we got there when we brought everybody in. So that's what I, to me, that's what we should be deciding on. Please.
Yeah, thanks. I would concur with your comments. Uh, uh, Brian, a question for you regarding Plant Moran. I believe Plant Moran used to be the city's auditor.
Uh, we may have been. It, it would have been a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was. As a matter of fact, I used to work with a former auditor who worked the Sagetech account. So that's the reason I, I asked that question. But I concur with the mayor Pro Tem is Plant Moran's very well placed in this space for municipal accounting. Um, and, uh, I think that they will be able to fill a portion of Peter's shoes. Um, the bigger question I have is, uh, trying to get an estimate on what we think the spend might be on this. I agree with the, go with the rate card approach as opposed to blended. That's a great idea, but I think we'll find ourselves probably more towards the consultant or the senior accounting consultant role generally. Uh, but I am concerned because, uh, you, you know, we don't know how long this period's going to be open. So the spend on this could get big real fast, depending on the needs of the city. So what I'd like to ask is if we can get an estimate after the, uh, after the agreement's in place, this plant could give an estimate of what they think the hours. After the agreements in place, this plan could give an estimate what they think the hours might look like on a monthly basis, just so we know what spend's going to be. Then if it varies from that, we can, we can kind of react to that. So. That would be appreciated. Number two is just kind of on those lines. We have any idea what it's going to be in terms of timing to replace Peter's position? Uh we. This this is a great first start. I appreciate the way this has been approached. Um very curious to see what kind of the recruitment process is going to look like to refill the treasurer's position. So maybe that's more for Monday night, but just. As we're talking, starting to talk about this, that's kind of the next step is, you know, how do we move away from this back into a full-time position?
Yeah, I I could touch on a few of those right now. Uh Councilmember Gardner, I.
Thank you.
Um the um you know, it relates to how many hours I I think, you know, part of that's going to have to get them on board and kind of take a look at things a little bit. I I think, you know. We had some benchmarks from some other communities. I I, you know, right now we're planning on kind of the the clerk deputy clerk handling the bank reconciliations. And so that's kind of one function that they were handling for the other. Uh communities that wouldn't necessarily be applicable. There's not utility rate, you know, items here. So I am hopeful that it will be uh less than what some of these others are are using. We do have. You know, some contractual services, dollars, you know, built in the next year's budget. Obviously, we didn't quite know this was going to occur when we built up the original budget and. Obviously, we'll have some savings from salary and wages. I mean, Sarah and Jamie are I they are receiving a stipend for their additional help right now. Um but that's nowhere near, you know, Peter's wages and fringe benefits necessarily at the rate that he was at. So. Certainly, we'll we'll try to, yeah, I I hear you. I was as cost conscious on this as possible and I think. Uh they do too. As far as filling uh Peter's position, uh so last Friday I I posted um or we posted. City's website and uh Miss- municipal league, the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association website. Our social media and our 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 local channels as well, uh Peter's position as well as the director of planning and zoning position. So. Uh I've received three applicants, applications, resumes, cover letters so far. Um you know, I want to leave that open for at least a couple of weeks to kind of see what that applicant pool looks like. If I feel like we have a sufficient pool, then. Uh we'll work on, you know, setting up um some interviews. I I intend on that being a more of a panel interview process. Um. Uh I talked with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem on at our meeting on on Monday that, you know, Mayor Pro Tem has direct accounting experience. He'd be a good person to kind of have on that. Uh probably invite the city clerk to sit in on those meetings uh as well. Um planning and zoning will be a little bit of a broader panel with some of our other board and commission chairs, but. Hoping to fill it as quickly as possible. I want to make sure we get a, you know, good quality candidate, the right fit for um the city as well.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? No?
It's a good solution.
Yeah, I think so too. Alright, thank you, thank you uh. Brian and Kelly for being on. We look forward to uh knowing you better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to a discussion item six C temporary wayfinding signage request. You'll find on page twelve of your packet. Manager wants to kick us off?
Yeah, so um. This kind of relates to uh uh some public comment that you received at your uh last regular meeting. Uh the owners of Cellar Door uh Trades is um, you know, submitted a request to kind of, you know, place some temporary wayfinding signage uh at the corner of. Uh Main and Butler uh to kind of let folks know that there are additional um shopping opportunities uh along Water Street. So they've kind of put together this. Kind of mock-up uh uh of a sign um uh show you what it would look like. You know, essentially they're offering to pay for it uh that they would, you know. Put it out daily and then remove it. Um you know, each night, um they they've. They may, if express a desire to maybe have some possible magnets of different business names to kind of put on it um and that sort of thing. So. You know, if your temporary sign regulations allow each business to have one. Sandwich board sign specific to their business and that needs to be outside of their actual business. This would be kind of down the street and more general wayfinding. The city council does have the ability to, the ordinance says waive any of the temporary sign related regulations, you know, if if it meets the four criteria that that are listed there if you if you so desire. Um I think the other pieces to consider um with this is kind of maybe longer term or a a part of the larger scheme here is that, you know, the the sign at um. Holland and Blue Star was hit again and damaged to the point where it needed to be removed, but that signage is almost kind of, there's almost a a brand to that signage, right? It's it's similar to signage that's across the river from from retro boats as you as you come in on the river. It's similar to the the signage that's out here at at. Um you know, Cook Park and on a Coughlin Park and some of the businesses also kind of have very similar looking signage and so. You know, it it would probably need a larger discussion about, you know. Signage branding throughout the city and then your desire for wayfinding signage and what that that looks like. I think the Parks and Public Works Committee has had some initial discussions as kind of. As they were like, hey, Douglas just did, you know, a lot of refresh and wayfinding. Um but. That's part of a larger discussion. Some folks may have very strong feelings about how that signage looks and how it, you know, maybe ties to the. Character and aesthetics of the community or some folks may say, yeah, let's do a new fresh look and embark upon that journey. So. Um I say all of that to to see what kind of what your feedback is on both the temporary sign that they're requesting and then if you have any initial direction, maybe on how you want to handle the overall signage.
I'll I'll start. Um I, you know, I appreciate. Those folks coming to visit us, you know, in in mass and plead their case. I think this sign does seem to meet those four. Exception requirements. The mock-up or the photo of it. Appears to be, you know, quite tasteful. It's not like one of those cloudbusters or one of those inflatable guys or anything. Um.
Feather flag.
Feather flag, yeah. Um and I I we all probably have at least. One story every couple of weeks of, you know, tourist comes up to you and says, uh, where's downtown? You know, or or how do I get down to the river or, you know, I I've heard there's a place somewhere and you have to show them anyway. So. I like the idea of a bigger discussion on wayfinding that might be uniform that helps. I mean, we we, you know, a bit a bit of that's been done on private property like at the pharmacy and. I'm, you know, I think the fact that it came to us, they they seem to be willing to do something that's very, you know, on brand for the city. I'm.
Please. We did, we talked about this. Um I, in fact, I made a comment when he was here, stood up and, you know, back when there was a business association, active business association. We did have a sign, wayfinding sign over there. I am so on board. Like like uh like uh Councilman Dean said about uh thinking about maybe, maybe that would be something we could talk about at our uh next uh. Strategic planning meeting. That's uh would be a great idea for wayfinding. Um I'm all on board for it. Um so I I totally support it. Um I understand that need for that. Um and um, like I said, I I would put out the signs myself and we had several and they were branded with the Sadaba brain, you know. But I would like to see something more consistent. Um and in in a larger conversation. So but as this is, um as long as the other businesses can be included. I think why not? And we've got somebody that's responsible for it. I think it's a great thing to do with the community that 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 we work together, much like. We used to when we had the volunteers that uh uh took care of the information booth for us. Unfortunately. We just, it's it's not in good shape these days and I know a lot of folks have been complaining about the information booth. But it's always nice when we have a group of volunteers that that are helpful to do ideas like this, like the information booth or wayfinding and. And that is on brand. The style is on brand. So I'm all for it.
I'm just pleased they actually came to us with a, you know, proposal as opposed to just doing it and asking for forgiveness later.
Right.
Well, I think there was some of that too, but yeah.
Oh, that's right. You're right. Thank you for drinking. They did they did do it initially and then we we told them I forgot. But yeah, I mean, yeah, we've had the things. I know I've had, I've heard other business people on Butler complain about cigar shop and their sandwich board. So. You know, there will be if if they can do it, why can't I? But, you know, I I I think if people. Can show up with these kind of proposals that are.
So I I I want to offer that as, I think there's two things. I think we've got something like this. It's just kind of a stop, get measured, you know, just to send people downtown, but. More wayfinding. The PPW has been looking into that and taking it on. It's a bigger scope than you might imagine. We want, we want to um. Uh work with our sister cities, have something and people don't, when they're here, they don't know if they're in Douglas or Sagatuck or whatever. And now. So we we're kind of go back and forth. Do you do something that's very uniquely Sagatuck? So you know exactly that you're in Sagatuck versus Douglas. The township, all of these things, but it'd be nice not to have so much like sign pollution where some things look like a little bit rickety and then these other ones are new. So. It's definitely the whole wayfinding thing is a is a process and that's definitely something that needs a lot of attention. Something like this, I think, is just kind of a one-off like, hey, can we approve this? To drive some business down to Water Street. All of wayfinding is a whole other project.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and I and I think if if we had a a good wayfinding system in effect, then we we wouldn't have any.
Right, and we need and and we're well aware that we need to, that we need to bring something like that.
Right, we wouldn't have to have all these little signs everywhere.
Absolutely, absolutely. Please, Holly.
Yeah, I think um I I I'm, I think this is a a good solution, although I kind of like that it doesn't call out single businesses. Because I think if they start doing that, then it's like, oh, why didn't you?
It gets to be the first one and.
And it may, I think it could create complication. We would regret. Um but I do, if this gets more people into the shops, um I'm I'm all for that. And I'm all for um looking at wayfinding more broadly. Whatever sort of look and feel we pick, you know, is a discussion for another day, but Douglas so out. I mean, they, I love what they've done.
Looks great. I agree.
Um and so I do think we can up our our uh. How we do it.
Are we finding game?
Are we finding?
I really liked your point though. Um so it's not like everybody into the pool. It's, you know, because there are these little areas even in our small downtown, you know, the, you know, there's Water Street.
Yeah.
You know, the cigar guy and, you know, where um Singapore room is going to be, you know. Just to tell people that there are these little, you know, enclaves, if you will, within our little town, which is kind of crazy. But yeah, there are little places that you kind of don't know where they're.
Right.
So I think that way they have to work together. I mean, you know, this might have been a Sadaba activity back in the day, but but it's not, we don't have it. So.
But um yeah, and and I, yeah, I have to agree too. I did, I I don't think there's a need for shop names on. Uh you know, just more shopping, just like this one is here. If you, like you said, you know, once you see a shop name, you know, then you're going to have one business that they gave. We want their their names on it and.
So I agree, I think that we should.
The city approved it, but yeah, I I can, I can feel comfortable approving this sign that's being shown that just says more shopping, more fun this way, more dining, you know, that kind of thing, I think is.
Anyone else? Logan, anything?
I don't agree, disagree with anything that's been said. I think we're in a good place in this conversation. Um I think it creates a little mystery. Not specific shop names. It's like, oh, man, it's.
What's over there?
A little intrigue. Um so I'm a big fan of the the solution that they arrive to themselves. Uh my my concern is like. Very, very small and it's just, this is, this is a temporary solution. Those sandwich boards are not weather hardy. Uh that thing is going to be looking rough next year already. So I'd like to, yeah, I I think that would be a sweet project to undergo. Uh huge, but with the way finding, but maybe maybe there is an update to our look and feel in town. I'm very jealous of Douglas's ability to pull out.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Right, I I think, I think to Logan's, but I think, I think when we present this Monday, I think to put the emphasis on this as a wayfinding exercise. You know, and we're trying to group these kind of like blended or like businesses kind of. It's not everybody in the pool because that, you know, that can get out of hand pretty quickly.
Certainly.
But if I think if we put the emphasis on this is kind of our start into wayfinding, temporary, you know, we'll try to be a little bit more. Organized about it, as you said, maybe during strategy.
He's got someone, you know, and it's, I think if the cigar guy came up with again, you know, and presented the sign saying more. Restaurants or shops this way, I think that's a good idea to.
Working with Singapore room and the other, the other businesses that are over there, you know, so that's.
Okay, Russ?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm in agreement with everything that's being said. The one thing that came to my mind immediately, which I think is the most important thing. Is that we had a group of people that showed up to a meeting and made comment and the city has responded. Quickly. That doesn't happen to a lot of the comments that are made here to council. So I just want to applaud the city staff for getting on this quickly. Because it's going to make a difference for some business owners and the fact that we actually responded, I think is the. And my biggest takeaway is the city responded to an item quickly.
Good optics.
Yes. Two is uh the whole wayfinding has been discussed for years. The wayfinding sign used to be the sign on the on the side of the drugstore. That was wayfinding. That was the extent of it.
Right.
Um I would challenge this council to go forward and pull this out of subcommittees and make a special wayfinding committee to include business people. Realtors, local people that are walking the streets. And see people always looking for where's the sidewalk, where's the sidewalk go? It's similar to what Councilmember Dean says. I would challenge this council to take that approach. And make that group responsible for coming up with some solutions and ideas about wayfinding without without a downtown development authority or Saba or a central business district. That would be the lead in a normal situation, but I think this is an opportunity for council to again, get more people involved in a discussion that doesn't just involve one subcommittee of the city.
I I absolutely agree. I think I think that'd be a great project and it would also, again. I think we tend to have sometimes have the reputation that we're not doing a lot for our business owners and uh this would, this would certainly uh show that, yes, we are. So.
But and then, you know, a big part of this is also parking. So. You know, keep so people get a better idea about parking options in town, you know, integrate that into it. Once again, more advertising for the high school parking lot. So things of that nature.
Okay, um we'll move along to a line item, discussion item, I'm sorry, D hardscaping installation request. Wicks Park Bar and Grill. I see we have Christine on the on the online as well. And Brian, if you want to start us up on that.
Yeah, so um. You know, Wicks Park Bar and Grill uh submitted for their their zoning approval uh several months ago uh and with, you know, similar request to have seating along Mary Street and Water Street as they had in in previous years. Um you know, the the outdoor dining regulations and the zoning ordinance require that that um the seating be on a a solid surface. And so as the planning commission approved. Uh the seating along Mary Street and essentially there was a condition that that that, yeah, that they needed to meet that that requirement. Um. So um Christine and and folks with her team have kind of looked at some different options. They they initially proposed a couple of other things to the 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 city that um, you know, um. You know, all the kind of rugs and and um some other materials that um, you know. Department of Public Works Superintendent Engineer and myself, I agreed with them, um, you know, had some concerns. Um. The city engineer, you know, kind of expressed a preference for uh pavers. Um you know, so we don't have more impervious surface and and that sort of thing, but at the same time, it saw some. Potential benefits to concrete and that. You know, obviously it's a flatter surface. Um so um. Wicks Park has come back requesting to essentially install concretes uh along between the sidewalk and the the curb along Mary Street outside of their business. Um the engineer and Scott had had recommended that. Um it would be kind of a five foot by five foot area around each tree uh and that the sleeves be posted around the the. Be around the current signage. So that way, once we have to replace signage in the future, there's, we're not digging in the the concrete and having that issue. So. Um Christine's indicated that that she's uh uh want to abide by those particular recommendations. Um but, you know, ultimately it it um. Up to you as as a city council, I I apologize, I should have put in in the report the the various considerations. Uh as it relates to hardscaping from the ordinance, we can, we can. All those up and send them to Jamie uh in case you want to evaluate anyone in particular, but open to your feedback and Christine's happy to answer any questions, I'm sure as well.
Yes, I am. Any questions, please?
Gregory, please.
I'm all for it. I remember when Mike uh Mike did the front of Del Sol and the city allowed it. I think it's great. I think it makes the safer surface for people. Um pedestrians and I would like to see more businesses do this.
Uh my only concern is that why would we want to get rid of green space, especially on a street that's residential in nature?
It's not green. It's it's mulch and dirt. It's never been.
I know. Yep, I know. I walk by it quite often. What I'm saying is though is that that's incongruent with the rest of that green space on that street. So I guess just generally speaking. Taking away additional green space just takes away additional green space. We we just don't get it back. That that's my concern with it.
I I I agree with Russ. Um Christine, I I hundred percent support you having tables there, a hundred percent. Um uh my. My view, you know, is right now water levels are are pretty normal. Um but we know that when the water levels are high, um. You know, Wicks Park can flood, uh the bathroom can be unusable. Um you know, in in my day job, we look at hydrology a lot. We look at, you know, trying to slow the water down. You know, when when we have these massive rain events to slow things down and, you know, an impermeable concrete surface doesn't accomplish that. Um once again, I would, I I would love to make this easier, more ADA accessible. Um my personal view would be. More of if not pavers, some something that. It is permeable enough to allow. That water to to move more slowly as on its way to Wicks Park and ultimately to the Kalamazoo River. I think we've all seen the advisory on the Kalamazoo River. Once again. Runoff is currently being classified as the reason why we're, we've got the beach advisory in place. And I would be, no pun intended, I would be very hesitant to open the flood space or the floodgates to more and more concrete in town that is impermeable. Um I, once again, I want to make this happen. I'd like to see this happen. I would want you to have these tables. Um but I would really like to see a a solution of something that's more permeable.
I mean, I guess like the boardwalk did it, the boardwalk did it in front of them. They have, you know, their right away is concrete. I mean, hu- all through Holland, that's how they do it. That's how they make the town look more branding, more on point, more. Together with if you have just concrete rather than putting pavers on one side, concrete on down the street. I mean, we already have product, I mean. I mean, we already have product, I mean, the sidewalks already look horrible. So it's like this, this is the best solution when it comes to the way that the town will look. If we do the pavers, who knows how long it's going to take me to figure out what color the pavers are going to be. We looked at mats, the engineers didn't like that idea. They liked the concrete idea. The engineers didn't seem to have a problem with the water. So, I mean, I, I just, I don't know what more I can possibly do to try to make it look better. It looks awful over there right now because I haven't put new mulch down because I wasn't going to be until, I mean, I'm fine if we keep it green space. But then that means I can't have tables on there. So I'm trying to fight for the business side of things too. And with a few restaurants being closed in town, those tables are kind of very profitable and we all know we have the, you know, sixteen weeks to make the money here. So by taking those tables away is kind of, you know, inherent to what I'm doing over there.
Christine.
I'm fine put, putting them on the mulch and putting brand new mulch out there, but the ordinance says it has to be a solid surface, which it doesn't really classify what a solid surface is.
When I was reading the, uh, report, it sounds like the, uh, engineer recommended brick pavers and I understand that and those would be permeable and it would still be a solid surface. What is, um, Wicks Park opposition to using brick pavers as opposed to cement?
Um, I mean, it will just look cleaner with the cement on that side. It will be just like a, a one big, big area. You guys had a problem with the mulch and the everything with the handicap people getting out. And now the handicap people are going to be able to get out better. And now you're saying that's not going to work. The pavers will be uneven. You know, those won't stay that even.
I mean, I think that Holland does a nice job with pavers. They do pavers and cement all through the streets in Holland. And I think it's a really nice look and they don't have to be uneven. If they're installed properly, they won't be uneven.
Exactly. But so I'm going to be the only area that has pavers. So we talk about branding and everything looking the same and trying, and then so that area, the only area with pavers, I'll do pavers. I'll do anything to have the tables over there. But I was just trying to make it look like Boardwalk, make it look like what Desol did, make it look like all the other, you know, parts in the city.
Please, Gregory.
Yeah, I'm all for green areas and I understand the flooding area, but this is a very small area and it's a high pedestrian area. We've got a wonderful park across the street. When I look at it, I can't, I can't remember. I remember the water coming up last time, but I don't remember it getting that bad that way. Um, and when I'm looking at it, it's kind of a slant where the water street goes down into the park anyway. I, did you have a lot of flooding issues when it came up, Christine?
No, it always, it's, it stops right at me.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, and, and like I said, it's not a huge area. I'm all for green areas too. So that to me, it's not an issue about green. To me, it's about, about where it's located in the downtown area, accessibility to people. Um, it's a high pedestrian area. I just think it would be safer and cleaner looking. I'm all on board. I'm going to vote yes.
I mean, if the, if the city is okay with mulch, I'll put new mulch over there and put the tables on the mulch. I mean, that's what I've done for the past four years. So the audience says, but it has to be a solid surface, which no one knows what a solid surface actually is besides concrete or like solid, solid. So it's just a, it's a very gray tricky situation, I guess, that I'm just trying to work through.
And, and once again, I'm, I'm not trying to single you out, Christine. If any business came to me and said, I want to, you know, add more concrete to a permeable surface, my answer would be the same. Um, you know, once again, this is not.
Who agreed? I mean, Boardwalk did it. Everyone, I mean, there's other places that have extended on the right away by putting concrete. And to be honest, no one comes down, the city does not mulch at all down Water Street. So it's not even green space. It is just dirt unless I put mulch down. And I spend the money to put mulch down all, all the way to the IBN and all the way to the post office. If I don't put mulch, it's dirt. And it looks awful. So I guess the choice like to me, how do we want it to look on, on a very, very, very busy corner? I love the mulch. I'm fine with the mulch to go to be my solid surface. But right now it's just dirt. All the way up Water Street to the IBN and all the way up to the post office.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, it is permeable as opposed to concrete. Um, I mean, I, I would be hesitant to create a precedent where I have more and more businesses coming to the council saying, let's add more concrete to our town.
Yeah.
More permanent surfaces. Uh, and once again, I can't speak to whoever approved the other properties you're speaking of. I, I, I don't recall being part of that conversation. So I'm sorry, but I would never have approved it. I, I think.
I mean.
We have, in my, in my, yeah, if I may finish, if I, if I could finish. Um, you know, my day job, once again, you know, our watershed is under increasing threat. Uh, this is only the second time we've had a E coli result. I hope it's an error, but it may not be. Um, you know, our watershed is under threat and we need to be taking actions as a council to protect our watershed. And we know, I know it's not, it's not a threat to your business because you, you know, you, you did fine during the, um, during the flooding that occurred on that street. But, you know, runoff was contributing to the problems in Wicks Park. So, uh, you know, I'm happy to find an exception if the short term's answer is mulch. I'm happy to make that, to work with staff and if the council agrees to make an exception, but I'm, I'm, I'm not in a place right now where I'm going to agree to a concrete for any business that wants to add, add speed, you know, add this to concrete around trees. I, no, I'm not, I'm not there.
Ally, please.
Yeah, I, I, so there are a couple of issues. One is sort of the surface and what, you know, is sort of the environmental issue and the other is the aesthetic issue and, um, and then the ordinance. And I think, I mean, I think we should enforce our ordinances. So I think that takes, in my mind, would take mulch off the table. Um, and I, I am with Scott on, you know, protecting our watershed, um, and not not adding concrete where we don't need to.
Does, do pavers solve for that by it being permeable?
Apparently the engineer thought so.
Yeah. I mean, John Moxie's just pulling up his email here. If you see me on my computer, I'm looking, I'm sure I'm following your conversation and pulling up, uh, other resources. Sorry, I'm sure you're not going to work, but John said, um, yeah. My preference would be pavers since they allow for a little bit of uh, stormwater infiltration and provide the visual distinction between the primary sidewalk and the seating area so that the seating area has less tendency to creep into the sidewalk space. But, you know, he indicated that when he originally looked at, at it, that, you know, he was picturing pavers or concrete, but his preference is the pavers.
That's fine. I'll do pavers.
We get there with pavers? Scott, would you?
I could get.
Would she did pavers?
Yeah, I, you know, if it's permeable, and I think Mr. Moxie's indicated that that's permeable, that's going to slow the water flow down. Yeah. I mean, Christine, I, I loved it that you had tables there during COVID when, you know, when we were trying to keep everybody outdoors. I mean, I think we sat out there. So I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of you having the tables. I just don't.
Right. I understand.
I, I just don't want to create a, yeah, let me finish, please. I don't want to create a precedent where everything's getting concreted over in town because I think that's a very off brand for Saugat. I could be blunt about it.
And I think pavers are prettier aesthetic too than just having cement straight across. So it solves an aesthetic problem. It solves the ordinance problem. We get hard surface and it solves the, the bigger problem is the, is the environmental protection and, um, having the, the permeable, um, ability to not, uh, not be so hard on our watershed. So I could get there. Russ, do you have questions? Do you feel like the brick pavers are still in tru- truding on the?
Yes.
Green space?
Yes.
Logan, anything from you? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Christine. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, strategic priorities, line item six E, six month progress review that Mr. Manager worked on. Page twenty of your packets. I'm sorry.
All right. Yeah. So we're, we're about, uh, yeah, six months into the, uh, the calendar year and, and, uh, back in December, you had a pretty robust, uh, you know, discussion and, uh, about what your priority should be. Uh, for the year and, and, and took into account, you know, different resident feedback through surveys and, and then obviously, you know, hearing from staff because staff participated as well. And, and, and then ultimately, um, listen to left column as you go through each slide is, is ultimately what was on the, uh, the priorities list. And then uh, I'll kind of touch on the, the progress that, that we've made and, and happy to answer any, any questions as, as you go along. So uh, under city operations, uh, you know, priority one are the like, hey, these are essential. We want you to really focus in on these, these priorities. Um, if, if, you know, so, um, conducting council workshops, uh, you know, covering quarterly finances, strategic planning, key issues. You know, there was discussion about maybe, you know, not having every agenda item on every workshop agenda, but kind of paring it down to be things that really need further discussion or greater discussion or greater deliberations and, and policy discussion as council members. And so I think we've made, you know, significant progress on that, you know, since I've, uh, was, you know, the interim manager and now the city manager, I tried to really pare back when we were bringing to your workshop meetings. We've still had a lot to discuss at your workshop meetings because we've had a, a, a lot of work that, that's ongoing, but you know, we're utilizing that consent agenda more, you know, we're not putting every special event on your workshop, uh, you know, meeting agenda, um, just to kind of streamline things and kind of really make those, uh, discussions, uh, robust while you're here. Um, capturing fees, uh, from short-term rentals and special events. Again, we've made significant, significant progress here. The, the council approved the short-term rental enforcement plan, updated your fee schedules related to the new uh, short-term rental licensing ordinance. So we're capturing our costs related to, um, you know, enforcement of short-term rentals and processing short-term rental applications and expecting short-term rentals. Uh, fees for special events has been discussed some by staff, but really needs more formal evaluation. And, and I know it's certainly on, on Jamie's radar, uh, and, and probably a good conversation as we get through this special event season. Staff, uh, onboarding, um, goals, reviews, development and compensation. I think we, we've made significant progress here. Uh, the prior city manager had conducted, uh, performance reviews for each of the department heads. Uh, we have a compensation study underway. Impact is today. I got some, some updated, uh, numbers from the, the wage consultant. Uh, and then, um, uh, you know, you've all at least been provided with kind of a copy of the, the personnel handbook and, and manual and, and I have some initial feedback. And so over the next quarter, anticipate we'll, we'll kind of dive into that a little bit deeper and, and do some, some larger updates. Um, doing, doing original litigation is, is ongoing. Certainly, uh, you know, that you know the status of that, where we're, we're at with that. Essentially, you know, the case is kind of at the, the court of appeals level. Waiting on briefings and, and, uh, and we'll go from there. Another priority one, essential, uh, priority was, uh, short-term rental regulations and policies. Again, significant progress here. You, you, uh, have adopted a new short-term rental licensing ordinance. Uh, you made updates to your zoning ordinance and your, uh, noise ordinance. Uh, you, uh, approved a short-term rental enforcement plan. Um, you know, we have Granicus, the address identification tool nearly live. Um, that user testing is, is nearly done. There was a couple tweaks that they needed to make, uh, and, and change, but that, that's nearly done. Uh, third-party code enforcement is nearly live. I, I had a meeting last week with David Drosick and, um, his kind of code enforcement colleague, uh, to kind of take a look at how this is going to look and, and some things we'll start handing off, uh, to them for some follow-up on. Uh, short-term rental license applications, those are, are coming in. We are issuing short-term rental licenses now. Uh, we have reviewed ordinance updates with the sheriff's office and the fire department. Uh, and the last piece with the Granicus is the one eight hundred hotline. That's kind of the next phase of them, uh, setting that, that up. So, um, and then the planning commission is reviewing data actually on Thursday and, and still considering, uh, possible caps in residential, uh, zoning districts. So that, that conversation is continued. Um, trash and recycling, we've made partial progress on this. I, you know, I've gauged with Republic who's indicated they're willing to provide twice monthly recycling pickup. Uh, we had sent out a survey actually this week and have actually a really excellent response rate so far in the, the trash and recycling services survey. To get some, some, uh, resident feedback, uh, and then the Department of Public Works did purchase new trash and recycling receptacles to kind of roll out a pilot program. Special events are, you know, kind of completed and ongoing. The, the convention and visitors bureau has taken on kind of those, those prior events that Sadaba, uh, was, was spearheading. Um, and then certainly Jamie and continues to work hard on, on processing and reviewing special event applications. Just had a couple of safety meetings today related to Venetian and, and, and other events. Um, natural resource protection, you know, another kind of ongoing piece here. Um, city council approved the waterfront preservation ordinance. So that was a multi-month process with the planning commission that ultimately to the, came to the council and was approved. Um, staff and the planning commission, we engaged with, with Eagle on some possible grant opportunities where Eagle came in and spoke about, um, some, some opportunities that we have there. Uh, and then, uh, the city received, uh, donations, um, uh, uh, for the airport property that would place a, a piece of that, uh, in a, on a conservation easement. Creating a parking master plan. Not yet started on this. Um, planning commission did kind of list, uh, parking as, as a goal for the year. So we'll kind of see where this one takes us. Um, updated zoning ordinances, um, you know, like we've touched on, we, we've completed a lot of that, but it's kind of an ongoing process, right? So we have waterfront preservation ordinance now. Short, updated short-term rental ordinance. We've updated regulations related to accessory dwelling unit. Uh, updated your outdoor dining regulations to put everything within, within zoning. Um, and then we budgeted, budgeted funds for next fiscal year to actually do some further, uh, zoning updates. Educate residents on, um, kind of taxes and where they go. I remember that being a big discussion as part of the, uh, uh, the priority and goal setting. Um, and, and I believe that we did that, right? We, we, as through the, the, the budget workshop process, we kind of touched on, hey, you know, how much of each dollar does, uh, actually stays here with the city of Saugat? That's because we collect it, doesn't mean we keep it, right? And in fact, you know, twenty-five to thirty-three cents, depending on if it's homestead or non-homestead stays in the city, the rest of it actually goes to other taxing jurisdictions. And we, we showed you where, uh, in the community, where those other, um, where those dollars are, are, are actually going. Um, infrastructure, switching topics here, um, asset management agreement, lead service line replacement. We, we made some partial progress on this. We um, discussed the water, uh, infrastructure improvement fee is, is recommended by Baker Tilly and the water set asset ma- management plan. That was a, a couple of meetings ago. So legal council's working on preparing that, that ordinance. Um, and, uh, resolution to implement that. Uh, the city received a grant, which was wonderful to, uh, complete the final lead service line inventory. And the city engineers had begun that, that project. Uh, and then a water operations agreement continues to be negotiated with, with Cal Lake and the constituent municipalities. Cal Lake just had a special meeting today that I attended where they kind of discussed it from their perspective. Um, roads, um, again, started and always ongoing, right? So a lot of big road projects were completed, uh, recently. East, West, Tac and Taylor and Bridge Street work is now complete. Uh, additional mill and fill work is budgeted for next fiscal year and uh, city council approved planning for Maple Street replacement. So some heavy lifts there and some, some road, road work has definitely happened, happening. Uh, bike trail completions. I think we've made significant progress on this. C two A E continues with the design finalization and still planning on bidding in the fall with construction beginning next spring. Uh, and then the council parks and public works committee and historic district commission, uh, reviewed, uh, those intersection, uh, improvements at, at Lake and Blue Star as well. Um, park street widening and safety conversations amongst park street neighbors. We've made partial progress on this. We, we obtained from the engineer, uh, planning a conceptual design proposal. Uh, to kind of take a look at that corridor, uh, Parks and Public Works, uh, committee reviewed the proposal and ultimately council did budget funds for us to actually move forward with that further study, um, next fiscal year. And additional parking and commuting opportunities. I think we've made, you know, some partial progress on this. We, you know, the CVB has been a really great partner in preparing some materials related to like employee parking and shuttle options and encouraging folks to, um, utilize other methods. Um, and then, uh, I've had some recent conversations with the CVB. We still see some opportunities to expand our uh, bike rack opportunities throughout the city. And so they're, they're, they're kind of working on a proposal that would involve, um, kind of some more artistic bike racks. Um, so you'll see some further discussion, I think, coming to you on that with Parks and Public Works and ultimately you as a city council. Um, getting down to the level three, kind of acceptable priority level for infrastructure. We have restroom repairs. We have made significant progress on this. We, uh, you approved an engineering proposal to replace the Mount Bald Head bathrooms. Uh, and then there's some funds budgeted next year that would handle some kind of exterior repairs on, on the restrooms, um, at Village Square Park. Um, and then Coffin Park Restrooms, um, it was a deferrable priority and we haven't started any work on this. At this point, probably won't, won't have new bathrooms, uh, at Coffin Park this year, but I know it's, it's, it's on the radar at least. Moving on the, to, uh, Parks and Rec on the essential priorities list, we had created a master plan for Oval Beach, uh, not something that we've started, uh, at this point. Uh, Oval Beach daily pass increase. You did it. You completed it. Uh, we talked about it. You're already receiving revenue for it. Uh, create a master plan for Mount Bald Head Dunes, uh, that also is not, uh, yet started. Uh, Village Square Playground and Court would be significant progress here. The, the new playground is constructed. It's open. Uh, it's going to be to wrap up the irrigation and get, you know, grass restoration and, and that's, uh, in the works and forthcoming. Uh, recycle bins, again, partial progress. DBW has purchased the, the new trash and recycling receptacles and, um, uh, just working on kind of rolling that out. Uh, Park Street, again, partial progress. We had the engineering proposal. EBW reviewed and you budgeted funds. Coffin Park Restrooms and official cleaning station haven't started, uh, but again, we've, we've worked on the restroom upgrades. Um, airport property was listed as a acceptable priority for the year. Uh, we made, you know, uh, partial progress on this. We've, uh, you approved a, an outdoor discovery center proposal for trails, parking lot signage and a conservation easement over a portion of the property and, and treatment of invasives. So all that, that was contingent upon receiving donated funds, which we've received. Um, so I'm, uh, waiting on, uh, ODC to give me a little bit of a, a firmer timeline and, and discussing next steps. Um, streetscape downtown, you kind of touched on it tonight a little bit. Uh, in fact, Scott's kind of brought this up too, if, you know, should we have a more uniform design or not? Or is it, you know, kind of nice to have something quirky and different on different blocks and different spaces? And so I think that's kind of a, a good conversation to, to probably have it at some point. Um, we did have a business owner approach just recently wondering if we. Um, we did have a business owner approach us recently, wondering if we could kind of beautify the street scape a little bit more with more flowers and, and things like that. Um, you know, Douglas did a, did a good job of kind of engaging business owners to adopt different, uh, beds. Um, you know. Scott's like, I don't know that I have capacity to take on planting a bunch of flowers and certainly there's a cost that too, but maybe we can work with our business owners and, and others to kind of take on some more streets. Scape beautification. Uh, Oval Beach upgrades, uh, not yet started. And then the same for community center, a new DPW building or gondola to cross the river was also on the list. So. But we do have a good chain theory that gets us across. So. On the economic development front, uh, completing the, the short-term rental policy update, you know, I touched on that, you know, it's partially completed. We've made great progress and, and, um, we're getting it done. Uh, increasing collaboration with the CVB. Uh, I, I think we've, we've completed that and it's an, an ongoing process, right? We've, I think, you know, the, the convention visitor's bureau here has been just an excellent partner. You know, they're, they're taking on planning for, for events that Sedaba used to or organize. Uh, I'm attending each of their monthly meetings. I'm providing them with, with monthly. Uh, reports, um, they've been re- kind of recommending some various ideas that, that I touched on that would be coming forward. They also kind of have a, a mobile. Um, info booth option that they're exploring as well that, uh, uh, might move forward at some point. Uh, and then I've actually, you know, worked to invite the CVB into certain conversations. We met with a couple wifi related providers this week and, um, I invited Lisa, I said, hey, should join me. You know, what questions do you have? You know, it's a concern that the CVB is hearing as well related to wifi connectivity. Uh, along those lines, better broadband access, haven't really started on like broadband specific, but again, I, I did meet with two wifi related providers. Um, kind of discuss options, feasibility, um, so. Cross our fingers, maybe we'll see a little bit more on that, um, in the coming months. Um, one of them is actually pretty, uh, innovative and unique and. That's gonna be interesting. So, uh, continue to support local businesses. I think you're doing this in a variety of ways, but you know, I'm hearing you tonight. You want to continue to do that, right? So, uh, you, you approved, you know, continuing outdoor dining, um, you, you know, we, we engage with restaurants that kind of work through that, that more, those more permanent approval processes. We, we did that during the winter, um, and then that, that's still ongoing. Um, we're working with AT&T to improve the cellular service and exploring additional wifi options, all things that, that would also support businesses. And then, you know, you're involved in, in, you know, reviewing and, and really approve and support a lot of special events throughout the community that I think also, you know, help businesses and, and drive traffic. Uh, attainable and affordable housing, no specific progress on that. Uh, support keeping tourism strong year round. You know, again, we're engaging with the CVB. We're working together. They're doing a really good job of, you know, they have a new website. They're trying to really market and kind of those, those shoulder seasons and, and drive traffic. And I think we saw like a really. Good traffic in the spring. I think we saw that late into the fall as well. In fact, we had folks walking around in the winter. It was mild winter, but, uh, I think their efforts are paying off. Um, working on expanding the, the Blue Star Trail, you know, certainly you proved the Mount Baldhead bathrooms and upper platform work. Um, at least the, the engineering for it. Uh, again, outdoor dining continues, you know, DPW continues to do a great job and keeping our parks in Oval Beach and town looking great, which is all part of, you know, keeping tourism strong year round. Um, and then again, those, those special events. And then the last item was VDA collaborate with Douglas and the tri-community and some sort of like downtown development authority concept. And no, no, no progress on that at this point. So. That is a quick, but I think. We're doing the work, right? So we're, we're carrying, you know, and you're doing the work because, you know, this doesn't happen without, you know, your policy decisions and directions you support and funds and budget and everything else. So.
I want to thank you for putting that together and, uh, it's not a small amount of work and it is helpful to see that, you know. We're making a difference by being here. Logan at this, I thought you raised your hand. I'm sorry. Oh, it was Scott. I'm sorry. Apologize.
But go ahead.
No, that's it. That's fine.
I mean, I'll kick things off. I'm sure there's a lot of thoughts on this, but. Currently over at Coffin Park, is it just a couple porta potties that are in the SCA parking lot? Is that kind of what we've been going with? Right. Okay. That's, is out there right now?
Yeah. Yeah. I know Scott was ordering them, so we had.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Max was doing, I forgot to look when Max was doing school parking duty. Uh, okay. Um. You know, what's gonna, you know, do we want to pilot? You know, kind of a more. Posh portable bathroom over there, either on, on the spot of the porta potties or kind of where we end up having all the events in, in the, in the bigger park. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of agnostic to it, but it, you know, building a bathroom would be, it's, it's another piece of infrastructure that you have to maintain year round. And I, I'm, I'm not sure that there's.
Those, those posh bathrooms are really spendy. Like I know that they've looked into it. Scott, I've talked to Scott Herbert about it. People, people like run them out for weddings or whatever. So you're not going in a porta potty. It looks like they're actually flushing and there's granite countertops. They are very expensive. Like we could build a bathroom for what it would cost us to have probably two seasons of those.
So PPW kind of ran it down and then.
Yeah. It's prohibitively expensive.
If you gotta go, you gotta go. Porta potty is gonna do the job. So, okay, fine. Um, second thing is, um. You know, I really like how we all agree as a council that we'd like to get more quarterly updates on the finances. You know, I think, I think that's happening. I think we're all happy about that. Um. Lisa and her team come to us basically, you know, once a year with the marketing plan. We see, we, you know, formally more often than I don't think we do.
He does.
You do.
I do. Yeah. And I know she, she, when you have certain topics, she does attend and.
Yeah. I, I just wonder if, if, if it's worth looking at formalizing, you know, you know, having CVB, you know, so she can prepare. You know, to be with us for a workshop where we can talk about things like, you know, this is what we're seeing. These are the visitors, you know, people keep telling us they would like. More recycling when they leave their short-term rentals or people would like to be able to bike or hike more, you know, or. I, I don't know if that's worthwhile or not. I mean, are we getting enough from her? I mean, not, and I don't mean that in a rude way. I mean, are we giving her the opportunity to say? Yeah, I'm gonna meet with Sagatuck and tell them kind of, you know, what we're seeing, you know, what our businesses are telling us, you know. It's great that one individual wanted to work on street escape, but for her to have her, I mean, I think she has her finger on the pulse pretty well.
She does. And I, I did this. Yeah. Yeah. I did discuss, you know, street scape with her. Like I said, there's a number of ideas that she recently brought forth. So I, I'm glad that she at least feels like she can bring those ideas to at least be as the city manager and say, hey, you know, what do you, what do you think? And, and we're working through a number of those. Um, so, but yeah, if you want to not, you know, more of a work session, opportunity to kind of, you know, brainstorm and I'd be happy to say something.
I'm not educating, demanding her presence at our meetings, you know, for workshops. I'm more like, would it benefit her to think like, yeah, I'm gonna, you know, update the council on, you know. How this summer has gone, feedback from the summer. And then, you know, in the spring or the winter, she comes to us with the marketing plan, you know, like she, like she already does. It's just an idea and I'm. Just, well, I, I want to be mindful that we're. We're doing that. But at once again, I'm, I'm, I would defer to the rest of the council and hopefully those of you that are more in the business space, what you think.
You're, you're in regular meetings with her, right? You're going to their monthly meetings or whatever?
Yep.
So you're in constant communication when it comes to when they're talking those things. So I'm sure we can get that information from him throughout the year.
Well, maybe it's sufficient, but maybe.
And Lisa Mai does reach out to individuals. She's reached out to me with some ideas and she's talked with, yeah, and she's talked with Ryan. I know she's talked with Tim Straker from historic district about different ideas. So Lisa's more of that type of just kind of feeling things out. Though she would be open to a discussion like that, I'm sure. But so she does have ideas and she brings them and, um, you know. Protest them so to speak. So.
If, if all of you feel like we're getting the feedback and she feels like she's giving us the feedback when it needs to happen, that I'm, I'm, I'm not looking to create more meetings or work for anybody. So. Just, it's just a thought.
Anyone else? This, Holly?
Um, thank you. This is great. Um, you missed on, uh, one of them that you did, uh, city council onboarding, which I think that was Logan and I were the first to benefit from that, which was awesome. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I agree with Scott. Maybe when we get our new treasurer on board to have the quarterly financial updates, I think would be really, really helpful. And I normally wouldn't recommend something tactical, but something to think about, um, is on our tax bills. Putting that dollar with the thirty-seven cents as a stuffer in tax bills. Might be a, because people do think that all of that money they pay comes to us. And that might be a good time.
It's not even thirty-seven. It's like twenty-seven.
For twenty-seven.
Um, twenty-seven to thirty-three, something like that.
Um, that might be a good time to, to reinforce that. And I leave that up to staff, obviously. And then where did the gondola fight come from? It was, it, when the recruiting brochure, it's like, I, I just, I laughed when I read it in the recruiting.
We were kicking it around at this, at the strategic session. It was, I don't think it was a serious idea.
I think, no, I think RJ Peterson wanted to do.
RJ Peterson and, um, I forget who the other, uh, uh, Frank Dennison.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the one thing I would love for council to do after the next strategic planning session is to make sure. So we were all working in our groups and we never kind of came back to consolidate and agree on how things were ranked. Um, and I just think that would be helpful. I mean, each group did, but we didn't, there's a lot of repetition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it just, I think. I felt like we got eighty percent there with that meeting, but not a hundred percent. And I might be the only one, um, who felt that way.
I think it was definitely a time of transition and that too. So I think that.
Yeah.
Always places to build from, you know.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up. That's, and thank you for doing this work, uh, Ryan, especially under the conditions that you've had to be working under, uh, for the last little while. But I just think this is really important to kind of check in on this. And it's really helpful to see what, well, all you've been up to.
Right.
The city's been up to. Honestly, when I looked at it. Even, even being as involved as I am, thinking like, oh, I forgot we did that.
Yeah.
You know, like holy moly, it's been a lot. Um, my only real notes on this, and I, I, I have no notes on the, um, you know, success of the report. I think it's amazing. Um, it's just as a process, you know, now that we have this as a benchmark for our performance, I feel like, um, from a priority setting perspective. Um, how do we continue to iterate and improve our direction collectively and holding ourselves accountable to getting what we need to get done, done? Because I feel like this was a good step. And the strategic planning session was a good step in order to getting some things figured out. But ultimately what I would like to see us grow into is a little bit further refinement on our, on our strategic directives. Cause a lot of this feels, I mean, that's a heck of a list. Uh, so, uh, maybe just being a little bit more articulate, uh, as a council on, on what we're looking for. And part of that, I think, looks like, you know, I wouldn't say this is really a strategy. Currently it's, it's really more of a punch list and more of a, an execution based list. So ideally, you know, and, and discussion that will bear out something, uh, maybe not looking like this. But ideally, uh, I would like to see us come up with, you know, as a council for, for the year that we're, we're governing together, what, what our actual strategy looks like. And, and what our goals are, you know, are we, is this a year, you know, obviously everything has to get done all the time and you always have to be responsive to new things. But, you know. An example of that would look like, you know, do we want to further our goals of enhancing our area for tourism and support the CVB? Is that, and identify a few key areas, possibly with some metrics that we can look at. Um, ideally, you know, is, is supporting our downtown businesses, uh, number one priority. This year it was definitely our, you know, short-term rental and citizen, the citizens, you know, sort of. Uh, task force, I feel like was a huge part of the, the overall priorities, but you know. Outlining ultimately, I'd love to see us identify an actual strategy that looks like these are our key priorities, not necessarily tasks, but key areas of focus. And then we could use that, one, to measure our success and two, to ladder up our priorities or like. And our, our activities that we're tasked, we're spending our ta- or staff time on.
Mm-hmm.
To say. Does this advance the goals that we set out? Um, and that feels something that eventually would look more like a strategy and something that we can review more closely and say, hey, is this where we should be spending our time? Um, because we're doing a lot of work. We're doing a lot of work and I have no doubt that like we can get. Some things done, just continuing to sharpen that spear a little bit on, um, how we apply, apply those efforts. I'm excited about it. And this was a huge step and super excited about it. Yeah. No, this is, but thank you.
This is good. And I, I remember you and Holly both kind of communicated to, to at least me and probably others that, you know, you were frustrated that you didn't kind of get a sense of what the progress on, uh, on. You know, on some of these things was, you just, we just kind of jumped into it without saying like, you know, this one's, you know, a green light. This one's a yellow light. This one's a red light, you know, and, you know, you know. There are things that are, are lagging that we need to, you know, recalibrate. So yeah, I, I think you're right. You're right on that.
I think too, I like to, the, um, is it having the bigger priority? So I think, you know, it is example, you know, supporting our business, you know, supporting our businesses. Uh, you know, if we had an environmental one, because I do think there's a lot of passion in our community for the environment, sort of a, sort of this is a big strategy. And then a lot of what, I mean, even the discussion today about the, the concrete sidewalks versus the pavers really falls. If, if we're really focused on being as environmentally conscious, then that can help drive some of the decisions even around. You know, concrete versus pavers.
Having an overall strategy can help out all, all steps of execution.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's, you know, it, it, once again, I don't like to make Christine's life any more, you know, difficult. I just got a business run. I get that. But, you know, once again, it's like, you know, the thing we all talk about and every applicant for the job you have now said, uh, rightly so was, you know, oh, I'm excited about Sagatuck. Who's a bit small town charm? You know, I mean, we can't concrete everything over and, and maintain small town charm. You know, some people actually kind of like, you know, that the picnic table's a little bit wonky and, you know, there's grass growing up between things. I mean, I think some people like, you know, the old. Mount Baldhead bathroom is it's like a nineteen forty's summer camp up, you know, when, when you use the bathroom.
I'll let you use that one.
Well, yeah, but I, I think just, I'm, I'm just kind of feeding off what Logan said. It's that, you know. There, there needs to be that kind of. You know, branding or I don't know what you want to call it branding or just sort of that kind of culture, you know, that kind of cultural aspect of, you know, that, of why, you know. Yeah. Yes, it may be a little bit more onerous, a little bit more expensive to do permeable. Some kind of new permeable surface. So it's not, everything's not just, you know, fresh concrete and Sagatuck, you know.
I feel like what you said about culture. I mean, here's the thing, you're gonna have a culture. You can define it or it can define you. Like if, if we don't actively make it a thing, then it's, we're gonna be, you, you will have a culture, like any corporation will have a culture. The city's gonna have a culture. And, and it's up to us. Same thing goes with change. And I know that people get worked up. Change is gonna happen. You just gotta decide, are you gonna manage it, right? So managing your culture, managing the change, managing all these things. That's up to us and that's our charge. I, I believe.
How you balance sort of like, you know, the quirky funky Sagatuck with just sort of like, you know, what's compliant with laws and what's, you know. You know, what's fair to everybody in terms of things like ADA and all that stuff, you know, it's, it's, that's the balancing act. Cause you know, I think ninety-nine percent of the people in this town get it, you know. I, I was walking by, you know, the bike rental lot sat, you know, the yoga place, you know, they've got, you know, in, on their property right up against the side of it, like a nice bike and a nice, nice little sign, you know, it's. Most people don't do a cloud buster or a feather sign, you know, they kind of get it. So, but. Still can continue to find ways to encourage that without being overly prescriptive.
Anything else?
I, I like to see, you know, a happy medium and, and, you know, whether, you know, um, you know, where, where everyone is getting something out of it. Um, I think we have, I think we have lots of green spaces around here, uh, lots of great green spaces. And I think things should be looked at as individuals when we make a decision about, you know, their property. It should be an individual decision and we shouldn't be worried about, oh no, everyone's gonna be asking for this now. And it's not about concreting the whole town. Um, it's, it's certainly.
If I may interject, we're kind of getting off the, the topic right now. We're on the topic of the.
Right, right.
The strategic, um, update.
About things overall, you know, we should think about everybody.
Okay.
Well, wow. I mean, I, I don't want to belabor it, but I mean, this is, this is a city easement. I mean, she wants concrete.
Okay. Anything else on the, um, uh, strategic priorities for us, please?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Bo-Tam. Um, great job, Ryan, with pulling this together and getting this back in front of us. But, and I thank council member White. It's essentially a punch list and it's a good reminder to me. Number one is man, do we have a lot on our plate? And that's something that has always, um. Been something that I've been concerned about is that I think we have too much on our plate sometimes, that we ask too much of our city staff with all these demands. And it reminds me that we really need to be focused on what the mission of the city is. The city is simply here to provide services to our residents, to our visitors. All the basic things that they expect when they come to town, right? Good roads, that the water flows through the pipes when they're in their house, all those simple things. And then there's the other stuff that we can try to do, you know, to improve economic development and so forth. But what this reminded me today was, again, I think we can dial back on some of the things. I think we have to be more strategic in our priorities. And that has to be the effort of the city council to set that direction with the community. Because, um, you know, if you ask someone what's important to them about Sagatuck, what's our mission? What is Sagatuck about? I'd have a hard time articulating what we operate under as a city council to give the city staff to say, can you align this with what the vision of this, of this, uh, community is? And that takes some work and I'd love to see us take that on. I think we need to, I think that's something we need to take on. To really help us guide our city staff going forward because we're not, um, I just don't think where we are, we've got a good start. This is a good basis. And, and just again, I'm amazed by the stuff that's on the plate of city staff. But I think we can get even fine or sharpen the spear, I think, as Logan said. Um, this is something I think is incredibly important for us to work better on. So I'm excited. Let's get going.
Thank you.
Well.
Anyone else?
Built on that though, I mean, because I do, there is one thing I was gonna mention and, and, you know, it wasn't in this, but I, I know you're probably, it's probably baked in wherever it can be baked in by, by you, John and others is, you know. Yeah. Trying to capture grant opportunities for some of these projects and, and trying to capture either charitable donations because. You know, I, I agree, staff, I'm sure are overworked and I, and I get that and I, I really do. Um, I mean, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not really there with like, we only just deliver the basics because we need to sort of, you know, actively manage. A town that's extremely popular, uh, that, you know, people would love to completely monetize it for their own purposes. And we need to sort of be sort of the cops, if you will, as you are around, you know, maintaining that small town charm. But also being a city that delivers the basics and these modern conveniences that people expect. I mean, that's, you know, they made it loud and clear. But also being a city that delivers the basics and these modern conveniences that people expect. I mean, that's, you know, they made it loud and clear, you know, on cell service. So, you know, once again, I, I would, based on the continued financial health that we enjoy, I, I. Still am in a place where I, I think we are understaffed, you know, because to, to have somebody that was really chasing grants and loans, you know, grant and loan opportunities for. All of these priorities, bringing in. Contractors and consultants where, where possible to do the simple things. You know, I was thrilled with this, this, this. This financial firm that, you know, they're gonna do some work for us. I think that's great. I think leveraging. Leveraging outside services for these easy things so we can focus on. Maintaining that small town charm, but also recognizing that, you know, we're, we're maintaining small town charm in a very changing world where. Somebody people are flocking here. Because they love the small town charm, but they also want these modern. Services and they, they want a safe sidewalk. They, you know, we've got, our sidewalks are, we all know what our sidewalks are like and some of the stairs, the one.
Um, we're gonna move on now to public comments on anything, if you like, public, any. Miss Gaunt, please state your address and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Bobby Gaunt, three four one Main Street. I'll be brief. All three minutes. Everything you've been talking about over the last little while has been about brand. You need to know your brand. I mean, I spent a lifetime. Professionally in marketing. And part of that was about turning companies around. And I was fortunate enough to lead teams who were able to work together to do that. But it all starts with knowing your brand. Because if you know your brand, that forces you to know your customers. And that's all of our visitors here. And there are some who prefer this, some who prefer that. But in the final analysis, they all keep coming back for a reason. So you need to know your brand and then everything we do should be to support that brand. I think we're in a wonderful place right now for a lot of reasons. And a couple of those reasons are. We have all of you. Plus, we have a new city manager and we're going to have a new treasurer. And one of the things that I'm thrilled about, and actually the reason I came to the meeting today was to compliment you all. On the foresight you're showing and retaining hopefully Plant Moran. Professionally, I had a lot of experience with Plant Moran, not from a government point of view, but from a corporate point of view. Outstanding firm and they do have an outstanding reputation in terms of municipal governments. And not only do they provide the kind of basic services we need or to support. Ryan and Jamie and Sarah around finances, but they also bring a wealth of experience in terms of. Who they've worked with, what they've experienced and ideas that they can bring to you. And I don't want to underestimate the importance of analysis. They obviously have the ability to provide all sorts of financial analysis. And this is not common, commenting on prior, on Peter or anyone, but it's basically in today's world. You also have to know your numbers. And they bring that analytical ability and it's just not about our finances. But it also pertains to other things that are happening within those numbers. That can help us meet our customers' expectations around what they're expecting in Sagatuck. So anyway, I commend you for that. I look forward to that. And. The other thing is the CBB. The CBB is actually a huge resource in terms of managing your brand. And I would encourage all of you, I mean, Ryan, I would encourage you to be meeting with Lisa as you are. I think that's terrific. But I would encourage all of you to also. Have regular opportunities where you can meet with the CBB. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Any public comment from anyone online? Seeing no takers, we will close public comment, no correspondence in today's packet. Council comments, I can start with Mr. White if you have anything to offer before we close.
Just, just thank you to Brian for, for the check-in. That's a big deal.
Gregory?
Oh, yes. Congratulations to Retro Bakery who had a small, little soft opening party, a private party today, an opening there on Blue Star Highway. Just outside of the city here in the township. And tonight is the first music in the park. Brought to you by the CBB and April Gundy, who's working with them. And rumor has it, Bubbles will be there.
My family loves bubbles, so I'm thrilled to hear that. Once again, sorry for a longer meeting, but I think it was good. I really like when workshops are, Ryan, thank you for, for the stuff you put the context and the check-in. Yeah, a really good, a really good discussion about some media issues, you know, that I think are important. So. I really appreciate the discussion there.
Yes, thanks to staff. You're all doing more than one job. And thank you for that. It's, it's a lot and it's amazing how much has been achieved so far this year. Today's Juneteenth and I was surprised, I'm a huge baseball fan. Willie, the late now, Willie Mays was only the tenth black baseball player, which is, speaks volume to our history of racism. So, you know, I hope as part of. As we look at our brand and who we are, part of who we are is inclusive and diverse. And so. I look for ways we can demonstrate that more. So.
Say, hey, Willie Mays. I would just, Plant Moran knows that we're in need of a treasurer. They might be a good network to work. They probably have a lot of connections in the state, so they might know some people that are. I'm in transition or looking at transition, so.
All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion Dean second. Hallie, on favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes.